You're watching WS TV Digital Media.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the May 23, 2019 meeting of the City/County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13 and will be rebroadcast at 10:00 AM Friday morning and again at 4:00 PM Sunday afternoon. We are going to add an agenda item to the meeting today. The staff needs to update us on the US 158 Beltway plan, so we'll add that after the briefing on Pitts Creek Parkway Corridor Plan. Our first order of business today would be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For all public hearings, each side has a total of 12 minutes. There will be no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question. For general use district zoning request, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use district zoning requests however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be considered by the elected bodies during their review of the requests. Before addressing the planning board today, we ask that you please state your name, address, and zip code for the record. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the April 11th and 25th meetings. Are there any additions or corrections? Is the motion...
Move approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Vaughn and seconded by Mr. Grubbs. All those in favor? Opposed, same sign? That's unanimous, thank you. We'll now call on Mr. Corley to review the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the... I'm sorry. The first item on the consent agenda is Item B3W 3410, which is a request to rezone RS9 Zone property and HBL Zone property to HBL. It's approximately 8.35 acres of the southeast corner of Haynesville Boulevard and Shadloo Lane. Here is a photo of the subject property looking westward along Haynesville Boulevard. The subject property is to the left. Here's a photo on the other side of the property looking westward on Kestner Mill Road. The subject property is to the right and across the street just off to the left is the Walmart Supercenter. Here is a photo of the existing portion of the property that's already zoned, HBL. It's used for some staff parking and maybe some overflow inventory parking for one of the auto-related uses along Jones Town Road to the west. Some of the special conditions or extra conditions that were proposed with this request are that freestanding signage for development within the subject property boundaries are limited to monuments with a maximum height of six feet and a maximum copy area of 50 square feet. The area plan, the Southwest Suburban Area Plan recommends commercial use for this property. Staff has recommended approval of this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
Well, yeah, I had a question about the archaeological resources that was mentioned in the staff report.
Yes.
And is there any potential ability to recover any of those artifacts if there are any, or has that been looked at?
So my understanding is that it was inconclusive that there actually are resources. There could be. I'm not familiar with the processes for how we would determine whether those resources exist. But if that were something, if it were determined that they were there, then we would obviously want to take the proper measures to make sure that those resources, if there's... if they need to be preserved, that they would be preserved.
So has the Historic Resources Commission looked at it or considered it?
Our Historic Resources staff, they're the ones that put the comment in there about the potential for archaeological remains, but no one has been to the site to evaluate that. I think they're just kind of raising the flag that there could be something there.
Okay.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval, second.
All right, approved by Mr. Lamb, seconded by Mr. Grubbs. Those in favor? Opposed, the same sign? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the consent agenda is B4W 3411. This is a request to rezone property from MUS to GBS. The subject property is 1.84 acres and this is a special use site plan for the use storage services retail. This is a photo of the subject property at the corner of Fleetwood Circle and Adenook Drive. The subject property, I'll go back to the map here. The subject property is in the Reynolda Village Shopping Center, or maybe it's called Shopset Reynolda Village.
Robinhood.
Robinhood Village. Did I say Reynolda? I apologize. So this is a photo of the subject property. The subject property is the very edge of Robinhood Village. This is looking northward into the site. And then this is a photo of the subject property from within Robinhood Village looking eastward. The subject property is here, if you can see my cursor in the background. And then this is a photo from the subject property looking westward into the shopping center. This is the previously approved site plan. I have highlighted the subject property here in blue. It was previously approved for two separate lift work buildings that were three stories tall. And now the applicant is proposing to construct a retail... oh, I'm sorry, a storage services retail building here. They have included some architectural finestrations and articulation to kind of break up the massing of the building. They've worked with us for a while to get it better than it was when we originally saw it as one massive building, but now it is one three-story building that is designed to look from certain perspectives as though it could be two buildings. And this is one of those perspectives looking from inside the shopping center. This is the southern facade right here and this is the western facade facing the shopping center. The applicant has included, as I said, some architectural articulation. They've got transparent windows, some awnings, and they have these tower elements here to go along with the clock tower in this shopping center. And then this is a perspective of the proposed buildings from the southern elevation again. And then this is the eastern facade that faces Adenook Road. Again, the applicant has worked with us to provide some additional articulation to break up the massing of the building along that road. They are proposing to install either transparent glass or curtain wall so that it fits in with the form and the scale of the existing shopping center. Some conditions that have been proposed outside of the norm that I wanted you all to be aware of. Subject property should not have any freestanding signage. Wall signs are limited to the western and southern building facades. And then foundation plating shall be installed as shown in the rendering submitted with the rezoning petition. And that goes back to this drawing. Foundation plating's along the building walls to again kind of break up that massing. The area plan recommends commercial use for this site. It's in the Robinhood Village Activity Center. Staff has recommended approval of this request and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Yeah. Mr. Corley, what is the level of true pedestrian traffic around this building? I mean, the renderings show people pleasantly walking around this building. Is there pedestrian? Is it a pedestrian main way there that people are trying to get from one place to the other? Do you find that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic?
I'll speak to that a little bit. I suspect that most of the pedestrian traffic within that development is probably coming from the multifamily that's located to the west of the... So you've got the multifamily, the Harris Teeter. Most of that pedestrian traffic, I suspect, is probably coming from those existing apartments. As you look to what is east of this site along Adenook, it's somewhat scattered, single-family residential in there, so I don't know how much pedestrian traffic is coming from that area, but I suspect the bulk of that is probably coming from the west.
Yeah. There are a couple of things and you're probably the right person to respond if there's any need for to respond from this. From a planning standpoint, I would not be in favor of this if it was a heavy pedestrian because despite the pictures showing the renderings of that, walking around an empty building or a building that isn't being used and doesn't have retail or residential in it, it really kills pedestrian traffic and we've seen that time and time again. The other thing is, from a planning standpoint, I'm concerned, again, we have another mixed use that's turning into something else. And we had such high hopes, I think, in a zoning and from a planning standpoint, that mixed use was going to work in this town, but we've seen a series of these now where it just not succeeded. And maybe that's something for our work session to figure out, is there anything else we could do with zoning that would help that out better? But I mean, I don't have any objection to this on that basis and I know that shopping center well, so I didn't think there was a lot of pedestrian through fear there, I guess. So I...
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Approved by Mr. Lamb, seconded by Mr. Grubbs. Those in favor? Opposes? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next two items on the agenda are related, so I will present them at once, but you will actually be taking three votes on two different requests. The first is for approval of a final development plan. The second one is for a recommendation for the zoning request and then a recommendation regarding the special use site plan that goes along with that rezoning request. So it is two requests. It's confusing. It's two requests. I think you vote three times for... twice for the zoning and once for the final development plan.
At this level, the site plan and the rezoning would be considered one action.
Okay, so two. Two. I apologize.
That's okay.
The action on the final development plan is final, so... and the action on the final development plan or the approval of the final development plan is contingent upon the rezoning because part of the property that is in the site plan needs to be rezoned in order to make everything work. So this is an industrial park off, near Union Cross Road, is off of Temple School Road and Millennium Drive. It is 13.31 acres and this is a site plan for manufacturing A&amp;B and warehousing. This is a photo looking from the subject property toward Millennium Drive, which is in the background there. And then this is a photo from Millennium Drive looking at the subject property, I believe, to the west. And then this is a photo, again, looking up Millennium Drive. In the background here, you can see the end of Millennium Drive. This proposal would extend Millennium Drive to allow the further development of the subject property. And then this is a photo of some existing construction on Millennium Drive. It was recently approved. This is the proposed site plan. I have highlighted the portion of the property to be rezoned or the other property to be rezoned that's included in the site plan. It's currently in Forsyth County, so it has county zoning. It's currently zoned AG. The rest of it is in the city and is zoned LIS. So the applicants are proposing to bring this county portion in and zone it from AG to LIS and match the existing conditions for the rest of the LIS property. Like I just said, the conditions for this extra parcel to be rezoned is that the conditions match those that exist for the rest of the property, which already is zoned LIS. And this is the Southeast Forsyth County Area Plan, which shows that the subject property that is not already zoned industrial is recommended for industrial use, although it is currently zoned agricultural. Staff recommended approval of the final development plan and of the rezoning petition and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
The trees on the north part of that whole industrial area near the Glen Way Drive, the neighborhood up to the north. I think there was a concern raised by someone in a letter about preserving those trees, especially because it impacts their views from that neighborhood. Is that reflected in the site plan?
Yes, and I neglected to mention while I was giving my presentation that the applicant has actually changed the site plan from the one that's in your agenda book. They are required to provide a type III buffer between this property and the adjacent properties to the north. They're doing that, but they have shifted the plantings for that buffer yard to the top of the slope at the back of the loading area here and then are proposing to preserve all of the trees down at the bottom of the slope. They're not going to be touched.
Okay.
The value of that is the neighborhood kind of slopes down to the creek and then back up to the site. That's why we asked for those plantings to be pulled back up to the top of that paving area back there, so it'd be more effective.
Okay. And then the other question about the plantings, and I guess I've mentioned this before, related to another proposal in that same area, is that the... I guess it was part of the original approval was that there be a berm around it that's planted with a certain number of plantings. And we went out there for sign check. They were very skimpy and some of them didn't look like they weren't even, you know, it was spotty placement of them and some of them might have died. So, and I think I was told that it would be a condition of occupancy that they meet the requirement for those plantings. Is that the case?
Right. So if a required buffer yard is shown on the site plan, they are going to have that... they're going to have a landscape plan reviewed at the time that they apply for a building permit. Our reviewers are going to make sure that the correct number of plantings and the correct type of plantings are installed where they're supposed to be installed. Permit will be issued and then there will be a site inspection to make sure that the plantings are where they're supposed to be, that there's the right number and all of that stuff. If the landscaping doesn't meet the approved plans, they will not get a certificate of occupancy.
And if plantings die post...
CO.
Post-CO, then it's... we don't go back out and do inspections. It's on a complaint basis, but if the neighbors were to call and say, you know, the plants that they planted, you know, some of them have died, we go back out there and we work with the property owner through friendly notification and then not-so-friendly notification if they don't respond to the friendly notification as far as replacing the vegetation that's died.
Okay. And then it was noted that there was some aspect of the stormwater management of this that had to be considered as a separate case because part of the land was outside the original approved industrial development. Have they addressed that problem? Because they didn't, they weren't showing anything on the site plan.
Yes, actually, the county portion was not included in the sizing of the original pond that's just north of this, but the petitioner has worked with stormwater staff and so that pond is going to be resized and so this property can be included into that. So whatever improvements will need to take place for this to be included because it all drains, that area is going to take place.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yes, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions for staff? All right. No one has signed up in opposition. Is there anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
Sorry. I was just going to say remember too.
This is for...
We need a recommendation on the final development plan of W 2744 and a recommendation on F 1585.
So this is on 2744.
It seemed that we would vote on the zoning first if the... it has to have the zoning in order to do that.
You don't have to because we've got a condition built into the... yeah, so that it's contingent upon that. So I would say go ahead and do the final development first and then we'll do the zoning second.
Okay. Motion by... Okay, move approval, second. All right, those in favor, sign of aye. Oppose, the same sign. Thank you. And that was Mr. Lamb and Mr. Bryan.
And then you need to vote on the rezoning.
And now we're at 20...
F 1585.
F 1585, item six. All right, approval, second. Those in favor, sign of aye. Oppose, the same sign. That's Mr. Lamb and Mr. Bryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is B7W 3412. This is the site plan amendment to W 2736, also known as Southeast Gateway. The subject property is four acres on the south side of Salem Avenue and the west side of South Marshall Street. This is a photo of the subject property from South Marshall Street looking to the west and south. This is a photo taken from the subject property or just east of the subject property looking to the north. That is an existing medical office building along Salem Avenue. And then this is a photo taken in... adjacent to the subject property. This shows the previously approved site plan, and I believe it was a site plan amendment that came through earlier. I have highlighted the subject property in red. You can see that previously there were two buildings proposed. They were mixed-use multi-story buildings with retail and residential components. And then this is the proposed site plan, which goes from the two buildings. They have a future building area up here labeled Phase 2. This is the... they have an actual building proposed down here, Phase 1. It's a five-story mixed-use building with retail on the first floor and residential everywhere else. The... I have highlighted the retail areas in red. And this blue line here is showing a change from the approved, the previously approved plan where there was no through connection at this point of the site. It actually came down through this parking lot and around near the Greenway, which is to the bottom of the site plan. They have proposed to build a through street that connects the two pieces of the property and then address the Greenway with an amenity. Instead of four stories which were previously approved, this plan shows a five-story building, which is mixed-use, as I previously mentioned. It has some interior parking spaces for residents and customers. These are proposed elevations of the building. The first one is the east elevation facing the main north-south street. And then the one on the bottom is the southern elevation that faces the Salem Creek Greenway. In these elevations, the one on the top is the northern elevation. And then the one on the... facing the through street. And then the one on the bottom is the western elevation that faces a parking lot. These are some perspective drawings that the applicant provided to us. This is the northeast perspective. So this side faces the main kind of street in the Southeast Gateway, leading down to the Salem Creek Greenway, which is back in this corner here. And then this is facing that new through street that the applicant has proposed. And then this is a perspective from the southeast, which continues that connection to the Salem Creek Greenway right here in the foreground. They have... or they're proposing to provide an amenity to address the Greenway and to provide some connection between the Greenway and the proposed building. And then the Greenway is here in the background and this is the south-facing facade. Some special conditions outside of what's already a part of the approved plan is that they'll record a cross-access easement for the construction of that through street to connect to the existing development to the east and then for future development to the west. The South Central Winston-Salem Area Plan recommends mixed use for this site. Staff has recommended approval of this request and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
And then the questions, Mr. Corley.
Mr. Corley, the last elevation, I'm mystified by that.
This one?
Yeah, by the four-story blank wall. Is that facing the north side or is there some reason that there's a... no windows and other things that we generally look at at articulating buildings?
These look like windows. They may not have been filled in.
Oh. Is that on your copy, they look like windows?
Well, there are outlines of window panes, it looks like, on this.
Oh, I see. It is better on iPad than it is on our screen. We can't see the windows at all on the screen here. Okay. So they're... will they be windows or will it be sort of a shading to... like a mimic of windows?
Are they windows?
Yes. Yeah, this is my... yes, they'll be windows. These are condominiums.
Could you come to the...
Yes, yes.
Could you state your name, address, and zip code for the record?
I've got a code, so...
All right.
John Neil Tate, 321 Susanna Drive, Kearnsville, North Carolina. Applicant.
Zip code?
27284.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So these are condominiums. They will have windows on each phase in each unit and balconies, so...
So these will be windows facing where I'm seeing...
Yeah, it shows that better on the slide here, too.
Okay, good. I... yeah. On our printout and on that, I just couldn't see it at all. That's all I needed. I appreciate that.
When we modeled this, we put some extra sunlight on that side, so...
Yeah, oh, that'll be neat.
Sort of washed it out.
Yeah.
Our condominiums. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff?
Yeah, I had a question. There was a letter from Flagship Healthcare Properties and I think that the shared parking issue came up before in a similar case that we had and it had been addressed, but just for the benefit of this person who wrote the letter and who I don't think is able to be here today, I don't know if they're here or not, but they wanted more discussion about the shared parking and if you could just address that for that individual.
So the applicant has been meeting with staff and with that person about the parking issue. It's my understanding that that has been resolved and that all parties are amenable to or agreeable to this proposal. I think they actually sent us a letter of support earlier today.
Yes, we did get an email probably about 2:00, 2:30. You may have copies there at your desk. I'm sure you've not had an opportunity to look at all those emails, but Ryan Dawson was the representative for Flagship and he... But Ryan Dawson was the representative for Flagship, and he is now happy with the shared parking agreement, so...
Yeah, I can actually read it. "Thank you for the communication on the matters to date regarding the petition of 177 LLC for zoning dock at 3412. This email is to confirm the support from Flagship West Salem LLC, owner of Lot 6, 390 West Salem Avenue, in a request to remove our previously filed objection dated May 9, 2019, where we are in agreement with the proposed site plan."
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Any other questions for staff? All right.
No one has signed up in opposition. Is anyone here in opposition to this case? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing...
I have concerns.
All right.
May I ask if you have concerns?
Yes, you're in opposition?
Perhaps.
All right, please, please. We need to pull it off the consent agenda, so we'll come back to this case.
I'm sorry.
So we're going to pull it off the consent agenda, and we'll come back to this case. So don't leave.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't remember if y'all voted or not.
No, we can't.
Right, right, right. I am so sorry. The next case on the consent agenda is B.8, W.3413. This is a request to rezone property from RS9 to RM5S and request a special use permit for an access easement to get to the property. So that is, again, two different actions. The last time, the board saw a special use permit, you are voting to make a recommendation to the elected body that the site plan meets UDO requirements. And as far as the... I'm sorry, as far as the rezoning is concerned, you are making the recommendation that you would normally make. I just wanted to give you that clarification. Subject property is 4.43 acres on the east side of Germantown Road. North of Haynesville Road is at the Maple Chase Golf and Country Club. This is a photo of the subject property looking south along Germantown Road. The subject property is on the left. And this is a photo looking north on Germantown Road. The subject property is to the right. Across Germantown Road, you can see some single-family detached homes. This is a photo within the Maple Chase property. This is actually going to be part of the proposed access easement to get into the subject property, and you would get into the subject property here in the background. So to the left here is the entrance off of Germantown Road, which is signalized. And then the access easement proposes to come up this driveway to the left if you're driving in, and then there would be a street, a private street, constructed at the end of the parking lot, of the current parking lot.
Question. So traveling from that current entrance there and going up the street, you would enter from the right?
Going up Germantown?
Going up Germantown.
If you're driving north on Germantown, you would turn right into Maple Chase and then turn left. Regardless of how you enter, you're going to turn left after you enter Maple Chase to get to the subject property. And again, it's signalized, so it's... This is the proposed site plan. Again, you can see this hatched area in gray is the proposed access easement. And then the rest of the proposal is over here on the right side of the page. There's a private street, 20 twin home dwelling units. There is a proposed stormwater management device that's off-site to handle any stormwater from the site. They have proposed a 10-foot street yard along Germantown Road that includes a split-rail These are the elevations that were submitted with the application. The top is an elevation looking at the front of the buildings from Germantown Road, and then the bottom elevation is the view from the golf course.
That's nice.
The area plan recommends this property for recreational use, commercial recreational use. That is a carryover from the existing use, which is a golf and country club. This use is actually compatible with other golf courses and country clubs, and it's not... The staff doesn't see it as out of character with the nearby residential uses, so we recommended approval of this request, of the rezoning request.
Can you go back to the previous slide, please, Mr. Corley? So the front elevation is the top, and what you're seeing from the golf course is those are windows at the bottom, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, any questions? No, no additional questions? All right, no one has signed up in opposition. Is anyone here in opposition to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval, second.
Approved by Mr. Lamb and second by Mr. Grubbs. All those in favor? Oppose the same sign. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the consent agenda is C.1, which is Cottage Hill Subdivision. It's 26 lots on 14.48 acres on the south side of Robin Hood Road across from Cherry Hill Lane. This is in Winston-Salem's corporate limit. Here is the proposed site plan. You can see an extended street from Cherry Hill Lane, I think it's Gibb Street. And the applicant has shown a stub to properties to the west and a cul-de-sac at the bottom of the site with an access easement to another portion of the site that's inaccessible at I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Not as satisfactory. I didn't hear that part.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You recommending approval?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Those in favor, sign of aye. Oppose the same sign. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last item on the consent agenda is item C.2, which is called Crescent Meadow Phase Two. It's six lots on 7.21 acres on the west side of Styers Ferry Road, east of Crescent Meadow Drive. This is in unincorporated Forsyth County. This is the proposed site plan. Six fairly large lots with a through-street connection of Crescent Brook Lane up to Styers Ferry Road. Staff has recommended approval of this request.
Move approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. All those in favor, sign of aye. Opposes? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Is that...
The next item is D. That's the Winston Overlay Alternative Compliance Request. We actually made contact with the applicant, and they have withdrawn their request, so we do not need to take action on item D.
Item one is case F.1582. It's a request by Gerald Byerly and William Byerly of 1.82 acres on the east side of Ebert Road. North of Evans Road is the special use rezoning request from RS9 to GBS. The planning board heard this request in the fall of last year. I believe it was in November. Back then, it was a general use district request from RS9 to GB. Staff recommended denial. The planning board recommended denial, and the county commissioners remanded the case back to the planning board to give the applicant an opportunity to submit a site plan to address any concerns. This request came back to the board in April of this year, but was continued so that the petitioner could have additional time to meet site plan requirements. This is just a location map showing you where the property is located in the growth management plan. It's in GMA III, suburban neighborhoods. Here's your location map and your notification map showing you where... I'm sorry, where properties were mailed notice of this request. The applicant was required to hold or to reach out to the community. They did that with their initial request and didn't... wasn't required to do it again with the site plan. Here is an aerial photo of the subject property. You can see that it's surrounded by fairly large lots, open fields. And then there's an activity center up to the north along Ebert Road, the Ebert Road, West Clemensville Road Activity Center. This is the South Suburban Area Plan, which, again, highlights that activity center at West Clemensville Road, Ebert Road intersection. Subject property is here in yellow, recommended for low-density residential use. This is a photo of the subject property looking down Ebert Road or up Ebert Road. The subject property is on the right. And then this is looking south on Ebert Road, so the subject property is going to be to your left. This is a non-conforming use north of the subject property on Ebert Road, across the street. This is the proposed site plan. The petitioner needed to enlarge the site to comply with different standards for, I believe it was County Fire who made comments about secondary access. This site plan shows the 40-foot Type III buffer yard along the rest of the RS9 properties to the east and the south, required 10-foot street yard along Ebert Road, and their 10-by-70 site triangles. It is 50 units, 50 shipping container units on a gravel lot, and it does meet the minimum requirements of the UDO. Legacy addresses this property by... Well, not this property specifically, but it recommends or speaks to new commercial rezoning that can hurt existing commercial areas. As I mentioned previously, this property is just south of an existing activity center, and Legacy actually recommends increasing density and development at activity centers and growth corridors at planned locations. And then the corresponding area plan has specifically recommended single-family detached residential for the subject property, and then says that commercial uses should not encourage strip development. It should be consolidated at existing locations, again, kind of speaking to the activity center to the north at the intersection of Clemensville Road and Ebert Road. Our analysis, the request is inconsistent with the area plan, out of character with the surrounding area, and could discourage new investment in the activity center, which could really use it. The area plan recommends that commercial uses be concentrated around that activity center, and this request could encourage future strip commercial development along a predominantly residential stretch of road. This third point is pertinent because of traffic concerns related to existing and proposed schools to the south of this site. I believe the board received a letter this afternoon from a concerned citizen who had... who spoke to that point. Staff, again, has recommended denial of this proposal, but the site plan meets the UDO requirements.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Corley? All right, thank you. So we do have one opponent who would like to speak.
And if I could just speak to the petitioner, because this is a special meeting and because it was continued from two weeks ago, I did walk out in the hall whenever we started the meeting to give the developers, the linebackers, a phone call just to confirm with them that they understood that the meeting was today. And Mr. Tyler Lineback, who I suppose to acknowledge that he did know of the meeting, but he had forgotten about it, as a courtesy, I asked if he wanted us to continue the item to give, you know, until the June meeting, to give them the opportunity to make sure that they were here. He indicated he appreciated that, but he would rather the item just go ahead and move forward, and I've documented that for the file. So just so there's a record of why the petitioner's not here, he knew about it but forgot about it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I do have a question.
All right.
It's still a gravel lot. Is that the intention?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there's no... So the only buffer between that and adjacent property to the east, north and south, is the Type III buffer, is that right?
Yes.
And yet the site plan does satisfy the...
It meets minimum UDO requirements.
And it meets the authority having to... The Fire Marshal's requirement for access, and really?
It does.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I did have one other question. Because there's no water sewer on this site, would the petitioner, if they got the zoning, be allowed to put like a portage on, on the site and keep it there or...
Well, from a building code perspective, unless there's going to be an employee on site, they're not required to provide bathrooms in this case. I don't know what the petitioner has in mind. There's nothing shown on the site plan for one, so if they had one and we got a complaint about it, we could say it's not in compliance with the site plan because one wasn't shown. From the testimony the first time, even though it was a general use case, I believe the petitioner did indicate it would be 24/7 access. They would have access via keypad and that they would not have an on-site employee, so restroom facilities would not be required as part of code.
And it's not gated or fenced. It's they rely on the security of the container itself.
Well, no, actually, it is fenced. They would have keyed access to the gate or card reader or some way to get in.
There's no foundation or anything. You just set a container on the gravel?
Well, there... Yeah, on the site plan, obviously, it's 2D. But from a building code perspective, there are things that have to be done. You can't just set the shipping container down. There are things that would have to go through building, you know, building code process as far as tie-downs and those kind of things. If they're going to take the shipping container and they're going to alter the shipping container, they have to have third-party engineering certification, that it meets building code. I mean, there are lots of things that they're going to have to do depending on how they plan on using the shipping containers. But you can't just roll them out there, put them on the ground, and rent them out.
Well, what's inspections going to require to get a building permit?
Well, I mean, again, you know, I gave you basically what I know. I did check with Dan Dockery. This was back when it was going through as a general use. I did circle back with him again whenever it became a special use, and, you know, his answer was, well, it depends, but they're going to have to do foundations and footings. They're going to have to do tie-downs. And again, if they go and modify the shipping container, you know, right now it probably has doors that swing open if they go put roll-up doors, if they go and put electrical or anything like that in. All those things have to be third-party engineered as far as being a structural element.
Okay. It'll have to be secured at least as well as a modular home would be secured to the ground.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Sir Speaker?
Yeah. All right, so we do have one in opposition, Mr. Abrego. Restate your name, address, and zip code for the record, please, sir.
My name is Jorge Abrego. I live at 4340 Ferris Row in Winston-Salem, Merka Line 27127.
Thank you.
I live, actually, I'm in the corner of that property that they're trying to convert there. My main concern here is that they're using containers, shipping containers, where they had no idea where they're coming from, number one. Some of the shipping containers, I did some research on this, they're called a one-way... They consider one-way, which basically means that when you ship from one country to another country, they mean need to be discarded because due to pesticides. There's a lot of pesticides. In some countries, they use a lot of lead on the paint, which they also have them because they have to have the heavy paint because they're... Due to the nature of the shipping overseas and things like that. That's one of my main concerns because everybody in the neighborhood lives on wastewater. Well, if you contaminate our wastewater, that's us right there. And the other families, you know, we're trying to come back and forth, but a lot of times not everybody can take off from work, and there's... I try to make the extra effort and at least try to be here. I'm definitely against this zoning, and the reason why is because I really believe that the shipping, the container fissure here that they're trying to accomplish is it's only temporary. Everything they put in there is only temporary. They can be removed at any time. So what's going to stop him or them from reselling our property to a service station later on, to somebody else, so you don't have any restriction? Once it becomes zoning to business, it could be any business. So here we are, as living in a property where we have wastewater. We defend our water. So that's my main concern. I know traffic was an issue and all the things that you guys brought up, but my main concern... concern in my family will be our water.
All right.
What are we going to do? I mean, are you guys willing to put pipes in there? No, that's right. So my main, like I said, again, I really am concerned about the water, and the runoff, the way it runs off, I think they did some kind of runoff study. If you look at how the water runs off, it runs off from an angle and runs all the way down to the whole rest of the homes. And to me, it's more an environmental problem than it is. I understand everybody want to get a business and things like that, but we shouldn't, you shouldn't do it to cost all the people lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abrego. Is there anyone else here opposed to this recommendation? Any additional questions? Seeing that, I declare the public hearing closes.
I'm moved that we recommend denial.
Motion for denial by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Ryan. All those in favor of denials? Pose the same sign, that's unanimous.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda is W. 3397, which was continued from February to this month. And Gary Roberts is going to be giving that presentation for you all today.
All right, Mr. Jones, members of the board. Yes, this case, W. 3397, began at your February meeting, was, then was continued to March in April, and now May, so action is required today. The petitioner is Jack Ventures LLC, and the site is 11.1 acres. It's located on the west side of Oliver's Crossing Drive, west of Peters Creek Parkway. The request is a site plan amendment for property zoned RM8S for the use of residential building multifamily. And again, it was continued, so action is required today. This is Legacy's plan showing the growth management areas in the county. It's located in the southern portion of the county, just east, west, excuse me, of Peters Creek Parkway. It's in the Oliver Crossing Activity Center, which does recommend increased density in our activity centers and a variety of housing types. This is consistent with that. So it's in the yellow growth management area three, suburban neighborhoods. This is a zoning map showing the subject property there, highlighted in yellow. It's currently heavily wooded and undeveloped. It's a little bit unusually shaped, as you can see, and we'll go over that in a little bit more detail in the site plan. So this property is really between Peters Creek Parkway and Old Salisbury Road, where you have single-family homes there, single-family homes to the north, zoned RS9 in the Oliver's Crossing subdivision. The towns at Oliver's Crossing there, the townhomes, 86 units here directly to the right, to the west, excuse me, to the east. And then the larger dark spot there, that is Oliver's Crossing Shopping Center, zoned Aerial photographs showing the subject property and development pattern surrounding the area. This is a South Suburban Area Plan, which was fairly recently adopted. The colors recommend different land use intensities and densities. This would be the tan color, where attached units, up to eight units per acre, is recommended, so the request is consistent with that. Yellow would be single-family residential, red would be commercial land use. These images are taken on site. This is looking into the site there from Oliver's Crossing Drive. If you continue up the street there, you get to the shopping center. This is looking across Oliver's Crossing Drive at the towns. And this, opposite this would be where the main entrance would be. This would become a four-way stop situation now. It's not. Apologize for the dark quality of these images. This is looking north, the site is to the left, this is looking into the single-family And this is up closer to the shopping center there. So the site is just, if you take a right on that sidewalk there, a couple hundred yards back, you would connect to the site. So really, from a land use standpoint, it's a good place for multifamily residential development. We have very few places that are within walking distance of a bank, several restaurants, a grocery store, pharmacy. So really, that is, this is a good location from that perspective. And again, the zoning is already in place, so it's really matter today of just looking at the site plan. And to the left would be Peters Creek Parkway. This is the original site plan, approved in 2000 was the larger development, and then in 2001, you see this, this development before you now. So in 2001, there was a site plan amendment that included the shopping center. You can see there, the towns, condominium, townhouse development there. And the subject property was shown in the site plan as RM8S, but undeveloped. So that's why the case is before you now, to look at the development specifically there. Not really talking about the use, that's approved. Not really talking about the density, that's approved. Just kind of managing the site plan. And this is the proposed site plan, a different orientation here. So the tan buildings, those are the proposed apartment buildings. You have two, three-story buildings, and that's the, actually, the western edge of the site. And then one smaller, two-story building. The blue would be the clubhouse and a recreation area there along Oliver's Crossing Drive. The red reflects the four-way stop situation that would be installed there. That's a good thing. This is kind of a blind curve now for folks exiting the towns, and so this would slow cars down in that area. Also would help for pedestrian crossing in that area. They would install a sidewalk along their entire frontage, which would provide, provide a good link between the existing single-family homes and the shopping center, to have a sidewalk to walk on, to get some basic, to some basic services. The site is pretty challenging, maybe one of the reasons why it has not been developed until now. It does have a stream, as you can see, that dash line through the middle of it. So there's a 30-foot buffer, undisturbed on either side of that. There's pretty significant topography going up to about a 60-foot change across the whole site. So they're showing a series of retaining walls, which exceed the 10-foot limit, but under the 15-foot limit, that the stormwater director, or excuse me, road control director has signed off on. And along the western edge, they're showing a 15-foot Type II buffer yard there, undisturbed, and they're showing also a six-foot opaque fence there. There's, had been discussion earlier today here at the meeting about some concerns from some of these residents. I'll let them speak to that, and the developers, if I'm not mistaken, have agreed to extend that fence down to the edge of the tree line in this area here on the northern edge of the site, where it abuts the common open space for the single-family homes. Peters Creek Parkway has ample capacity. Transit line does not go down this far. It stops about two miles north at the Walmart. But again, being close to a variety of services, walking distance within a grocery store, it's consistent with the area plan, consistent with Legacy. These are the building elevations. This would be the three-story units with the RS9 property in the background. And just in analysis, as I mentioned, it's consistent with the approval and uses for this site. It's a good location for multifamily residential, as it's located within an activity center and walking distance of a shopping center. And finally, the density is compatible with that of the adjacent townhomes, which also is zoned RM8 across Oliver's Crossing Drive. So staff recommends approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Roberts, did staff have any concern about the placement of the clubhouse so close to that four-way stop?
No. They, if you look very, very closely at the site plan, they are showing a small fence around their immediate play area, not their whole recreation area, but that actually kind of demonstrates human activity, which is a good thing to see. We did not have any problem with that.
I didn't know from a traffic perspective if that was going to create issues.
No. They did do a traffic study, and it's about 650 trips that this would generate. I don't know if their traffic representative is here today, but we had no transportation problems, especially once we got the four-way stop situation worked out.
Mr. Donigan?
Mr. Roberts, could you show us on the site plan where the wetlands are?
Yeah, so they would be along the stream. I believe, and I can let the site plan petitioner speak to that, that it's in this area here. But this, this dash line is a stream that traverses through the whole site. So it's either right here or here, maybe, Chris, you can see on the, on the, on the site plan. But I prefer to let the petitioner speak to that specifically.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Yes.
So we do have proponents and opponents here, so we're going to open the public hearing. Each side does have 12 minutes to speak. Please keep that in mind. Proponents in favor, we're going to have Dustin Mills, I think this is Jessica Rosie, and Matt Lauder. Please step forward and again state your name, address, and zip code for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Dustin Mills. I am here, our address is 2217 Stanton'sburg Road, Greenville, North Carolina, 27834. I'm the property owner. Our firm is seeking the site plan amendment. To give you a point of perspective, just a quick overview of the site in relation to I-40 and downtown Winston-Salem along Peters Creek Parkway. The site, as Mr. Roberts mentioned, is very rare that we're able to locate a site that has, that you can walk to a grocery store, that you can walk to a bank, that you can walk to restaurants. So we were very interested. It's even more rare when you find that, and it's at a stoplight intersection on a major thoroughfare that's significantly under capacity. So we think that, as he said, it is a technically challenging site, but we've got a plan that we think will address that. I'm going to skip over that. That's the same site plan, just on an aerial version, but again, showing the Lowe's Food Shopping Center in relationship to our proposed property. So a quick overview of the development. This is a workforce housing development that will serve individuals that make somewhere in the $40,000 a year range, and I'll get into that in more detail. But we did have some opposition when we initially proposed this development back in January in our initial neighborhood meeting. So I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about what that, what those concerns are and answering those questions as well. The total development cost is going to be about $12 million, about $137,000 per unit, 88 total units, density of 7.93, which is under what is allowed under the present zoning. We have a full-time onsite property manager and assistant manager and maintenance supervisor. We've got a clubhouse that was asked about a few minutes ago, that will include a leasing and management office, internet cafe, and a resident activity center. Stringent residency requirements, we require all of our residents to have income verification, credit history, rental history, all the things that, that we want to consider as an owner of property. And one of the questions that came up, I'll address this later, but the first question we got was, is this public housing? And just bluntly, no, it is not. It's privately held by our company. We're a multi-generation Eastern North Carolina company and property owner. So quickly, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but just what we envision the path to approval tonight is that we are consistent with all relevant plans and the proposed amendment, reasonable in the public's interest. Our plan meets all municipal requirements. It's zoned, as Mr. Roberts mentioned. It is consistent with the Legacy 2030 plan, and it is consistent with the Superbman Area Plan. Mr. Roberts mentioned, and it was also listed in the staff report, that in their opinion, and we agree, that this is an ideal location for multifamily. And the fact that it's close to an activity center and has walking distance to shopping is a plus. We've worked closely with the neighbors after our first meeting, and even after our second voluntary meeting, to address their concerns. And we did some things. We worked with Councilman Larson and staff to come up with the idea of a four-way stop sign lighting along Oliver's Crossing Drive to slow down the velocity of traffic. And again, it's located in an activity center, which we all know is a good thing. We've heard that a couple of times already. And it addresses a significant need for workforce housing in Winston-Salem that I think most are aware. So technically, the opposition, there were two, kind of two fields. One was the, what is this? We don't know what it is. And the other was the technical, what's the runoff going to be? What are my concerns? To answer, I think it was Member Dunhagen's question about the, the wetlands. There, to answer that, get it out of the way, there aren't any wetlands on the site. There is a creek that runs through the property, but there are no delineated wetlands on the site. And we'll talk about it later, but in the first, second, first bullet here, we've had DEQ and the Corps of Engineers onsite. Both have confirmed the limits of the existing stream and that we are within the required limits with our design. So no wetlands, but there is a creek, so it's technically wetland, but it's not a definitionally wetland. Stormwater has been the big question. What's going to keep the water from running off this property and flooding my backyard, which is a completely legitimate concern? Not only are we doing a really expensive underground system, oh, I'm sorry. No, got animated here. Not only are we doing an expensive underground system to maintain tree save here, we are kind of pushing our development towards the most developable area for obvious reasons. So to address that, there's no net increase in storm runoff, as is required by the approved site plan. We've got a sizable perimeter buffer in addition to, as best we can tell, we're about 400 feet plus minus from any of our buildings to the closest residential building, either through the townhomes or the adjacent single-family homes. And even where our property line ends, you can, there's a sizable property that's owned by the HOA of the single-family home, so creates that buffer. We're only disturbing about 45% of the site, which we are happy about, because that's less trees that have to come down. Our neighborhood meeting, our first neighborhood meeting, we hosted on January 30th, about 29 individuals and interested parties came in. And I won't read all through the questions, but in general, it was, what is this? Should we be concerned? And all of that, so on and so forth. And so when we realized that there were concerns, and we wanted to take our time and work with our neighbors to address those, we requested the deferral. And when we requested our second deferral, it was because we hadn't had everything tied up like we had wanted to in working with the neighbors. In the second neighborhood meeting, we held that on April the 17th, and one of the things that we did that's, what I think is unique, is, and you see on the red outline, it's a little tough to see, but the main five questions that we took away from the meeting, we gave in the letter that we sent notifying residents of the neighborhood, of the neighborhood meeting, the answers to those questions. Is this public housing? What's it going to, you know, what's it going to cost? What's it going to look like? How's the property going to impact my value? In the second meeting, we were happy to see that the initial 29 had kind of dwindled down to five. We had it at the exact same location and notified the same group. And so we, we feel like both of the HOA members, or at least they represent themselves as the head of the HOA for the single-family home, and the townhomes were there, Councilman Larson was there, and a few other residents. So we had a very productive meeting. We even got the comment from one of the residents that she had come in, ready, you know, guns are blazing, but after we talked about it and she saw what it was and understood, the fear factor was removed, and she was thankful for us taking the time to do a second meeting. I think it's worth noting from our standpoint, there were also residents that weren't able to attend. We met with them individually in their homes to address their concerns, and have since followed up with them in writing via email to address any of the questions that they've had, sought their feedback, and we haven't gotten any additional questions from them. Rendering that was completely, the rendering that was provided earlier, I'll kind of skip through that. I mentioned that Councilman Larson was supportive in our public meeting of adding a four-way stop. That was not in existence during the first public meeting, but we heard residents talk about, you know, the speed of which. Our traffic impact study, which I'll talk about briefly, did not address any major concerns, but you could visually see sometimes there are, you know, quick, quick cars in that. So we think the four-way stop is a, is a good opportunity there to address that velocity and speed of those cars. The yellow dots that you see are proposed lighting areas that we agreed to, to light our sidewalk, and the sidewalk will go all the way to the shopping center. In dealing with some of the residents, they had concerns along Old Salisbury. They wanted fencing along the rear. We agreed to that. We have written agreements in place to provide that, and it's shown on the plan tonight. As Mr. Roberts mentioned, there's, I believe there may be some residents now who want the site to, for this fence to continue around this way and come back here, and we've agreed to that tonight and provide that for the record. What is workforce housing? That was one of the big questions that we wanted to make sure everybody understood. These are, this is privately owned development for working-class individuals. So the typical person's going to make $39,000 a year. About 63% of Winston-Salem's workforce mean and median salaries under this income community range, meaning that technically speaking, 63% of the working-class individuals in, or this is the working individuals in Winston-Salem. just the working individuals in Winston-Salem meet the criteria that we're targeting. And I thought it was, I won't read all these, but I think it's important to show that 30% of the households pay more than 50% of their income in rent. That's a systemic problem across our country today, and it's one that we need to address, and opportunities like this don't happen very often. Our funding is in place, we own the site now, we're ready to move forward, and we've got a great site that allows walkability, ease of access to a major thoroughfare, and seven minutes from, or seven miles from downtown Winston-Salem. Better than the rendering, I think, is what the proposed development will look like when it's done. This is the actual development building that will be built on the site. This is a development that we completed about a year ago in Wakefield Commons, which is in North Raleigh. I'll talk about that in more in just a second, but I wanted to give you a visual. We did a voluntary TIA as part of our, to address the concerns with the residents. We submitted that to staff for review, and for the record, the takeaways from that were nominal impact to Oliver's Crossing, one vehicle every two minutes in AM, and one, I'm sorry.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, thank you. One and a half minutes in the peak hour. Four-way stop, we talked about that, and site suitability and walkability, because that'll help decrease the amount of cars needed to travel. These are studies that we shared with the residents that show no correlation from a value standpoint between the availability and proximity of workforce housing to, there's no correlation between a negative impact on property values. Well, this is one, this is our Wakefield development, this is in North Raleigh. It's a good example, because there are four developments in this neighborhood that are exactly the same development that we do, one of which we own, and the red area shows that there was a 6.1% property increase year over year. Four developments in a golf course community, and had absolutely no impact, at least a negative, you know, there was a positive stem. So in conclusion, I'd like to summarize by saying, from the Planning Commission's standpoint, we believe that it meets all technical requirements for the requested approval. We've worked closely with staff to get that. Staff did recommend approval, they have said today that it's a good location, it's consistent with the 2030 Plan, it's consistent with the South Suburban Area Plan, walkable. We've put in place measurements to help reduce the speed of the traffic. We've got stoplight intersections that allow for ease of access onto that and safety. And TIA shows minimal impact, and again, no statistical correlation between an impact on property values. So I've got all of our, I've got our traffic engineer, our value engineer, our site engineer, and our attorney, if we have any questions, they'll be available to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifteen seconds. That's well timed.
So, any questions for?
Let me, let me just compliment you, we see a lot of write-ups on neighborhood meetings. Yours was by far the clearest and straightforward for both the positives and the negatives, and I appreciate that from having to figure those things out from this standpoint.
Thank you.
It's well done, man.
Thank you very much.
How long do you have to restrict the income for your applicant?
Yeah, so.
To be, to make the credits work, how long?
So the credits require 15-year minimum, but we extend compliance for 30 total years. We're a developer and owner of workforce housing, so it's in our best interest, especially when you find a property like this. We don't want it to be affordable in the early stages and then get taken into the, you know, marked up to market, which is what the term is, when somebody buys a well-located apartment complex and marks it up. So 30 years is the answer to your question. The credits are good for 15 years, but 30 years is the maximum, minimum amount that we would preserve, you know, the deed restriction for affordable.
Thank you.
I had a question as well. The undeveloped part of this property, the strange configured piece, so is there any, will that part of it never be developed because it's part of the tree save, and it's intended to be undisturbed?
Yes, ma'am. So for two reasons. One, we own the property as one single property, it's financed as collateral for this particular development, so we couldn't even cut it out with our lenders. But secondly, from a density standpoint, we have maxed it out to the density that's allowed on that entire parcel. So that in and of itself, from a municipal standpoint, should define whether or not anything's ever done on that. And quite honestly, just topographically and with the stream, it's almost impossible to do anything in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Ms. Rosie, if you'd like to speak, we have 15 seconds.
They were, they were just signed up in case they were needed to answer any questions.
Okay, all right. All right, I will now turn to the opponents again. You have 12 minutes total. We have Jeff Albertson and Clementine Barr. Ms. Barr, you're speaking first?
Yes.
All right. State your name and address and zip code for the record, please.
My name is Clementine Barr. I live at 1820 Oliver's Crossing Circle, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27127.
Thank you.
I live in the circle here at Oliver Crossing. The construction that we are referring to today, entrance and exit will be directly in front of our entrance and exit. The lower one, we only have two in this circle. My concern, and I am that person that he was referring to in the meeting that had calmed down over the meetings, I have calmed down. I did oppose this, and still do. My concern is the traffic. Oliver's Crossing Circle Drive have a terrible circle. The street burrs around to the right, all the way down to the next street, I think it's called Camishaw. For us to get out of the circle, we take a chance every time we come out of it. I know they said their traffic people came out and did a count and, counting cars and check, their timing was wrong. It had to be wrong. I stand out there with small children of the neighborhood, not my own, but other people's kids, just keep them safe and stuff in the mornings. If you would only look at, well, no, don't only look at the traffic in this area. It's a huge concern. I have the name of nine other people that opposed this, that couldn't be here at this meeting today, that I wish you all would take in consideration also. My concern is us getting in and out safely. I love the idea that they're gonna have four-way stops and a crosswalk and added lights, that's all good, but will it pay off? I don't know. I don't know. It's a bad area to put a house, apartment, condos, it's a bad area, the area's not suited for that. So, that's all I have to say, at least I got it off my chest, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barr.
Nine and a half minutes.
Mr. Albertson?
Jeff Albertson, 1682 Havisham Park Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27127.
Right.
And I'm just here to make sure that, after reading the agenda, some things that I thought needed to be corrected, or at least brought to people's attention, that weren't, that I didn't feel like were represented well. First off, well, our area, the north side of the apartment complex is where the Havisham Park Drive is. It wasn't actually mentioned in a lot of the combinations. We talked, we discussed earlier today, and they're gonna build, bring the fence around to block some of that area for the local, or the people that are, the residents that are close by there. So that's, that was just, I'm just mentioning that because they asked me to go ahead and mention that, but he's already agreed to take care of that fence. The northern side of Oliver's Crossing subdivision is the single-family homes, and during the process of all the discussions of appropriateness of this, that was not mentioned. All they wanted to talk about was the townhouses across the street, and it seemed to imply that the townhouses and apartment complexes are equivalent pieces. They're not. The townhouses, people own individual townhouses, just like you own residential homes. So there is a difference between apartments and homes, and they're sticking apartment complex right in the middle of a residential area. And I know they, they're claiming that it's not something that would cause an impact. I don't see how I can agree with that, but I don't have any proof except for my suppositions on that point. Oh, let's see, the misreposition, to our knowledge, there's no other income-limited housing in the area. They are saying that there is no government housing support in this, but at the same time, they're doing the income limited. So for a layman like me, doesn't matter whether it's coming from the government or it's coming from somewhere else, it is still a income-limited situation where...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we can consider that.
Right.
I think that's probably inappropriate. Well, I know it's inappropriate.
Anyone's gonna clean that up before you kinda started your discussion, just kinda elaborate on that, but you're correct.
It's in your...
It's just inappropriate for my interpretation of what I'm doing here.
Okay, all right, I understand that, but then it needs to be stricken from the staff report. It's in the staff report.
Thank you.
Okay.
I believe that reference is in your book, but those are comments from the neighborhood meeting.
From the neighborhood meeting.
Yes, not in the staff.
I stand corrected then. Well, that was it, that was my last comment on the thing, so I'll make this short. All right. And let y'all do your thing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Albertson. Is anyone else in opposition to this request?
Still six minutes.
Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
You know, I don't know whether the letter we got was from Mr. Albertson's wife, Laura Albertson. But I was wondering whether there was, the staff had looked through, it was, I couldn't, I didn't have a calculator, so.
She did extensive research, and she was good, the numbers are slightly off, we have run the numbers, that both, both the existing townhomes and the proposed multifamily, there is enough acreage there that the density works for what's there and what's proposed.
You oughta be certain, since that had been brought up very clearly.
Can I ask you to clarify?
Yeah, he's, if you wanna ask him a question.
Well, it was, I didn't know it was his wife, but it seemed like it was related, yeah.
The argument that was held with that was that with the property of the condominiums, the townhouses, excuse me, as they are, that the property didn't add up to where the condominiums actually were in compliance, okay? After speaking with Robert here, it, what happened was, they added the property in the actual road itself, and that made it be in compliance, but you had to add that public property to it to make it work. And it's, it was just one of those sidebars that she really latched on to, and I apologize.
Mr. Albertson actually mentioned that to me at our Peters Creek Parkway corridor plan meeting at the last session, and so after that, I asked Chris and Desmond to take a look at that, and the numbers did come out correctly. So we did, we did hear your comment, and we did double-check that.
Thank you.
I just wanna mention a couple of things before you start your deliberation on this case. George is correct. I would encourage the board, as we've talked about on several occasions, to focus your discussion on things like land use, compatibility with the surrounding uses and zoning, transportation impacts, environmental impacts. As you know, the zoning is already in place and approved, and the use is already in place and approved. So again, you've heard a lot of discussion from applicant about workforce housing, and while that's a worthy cause, zoning is not the mechanism where we can tie somebody to promises made about rent levels and things of that nature. So again, not saying the applicant's disingenuous, we have no way of making sure that happens, and that's something that you really shouldn't consider in making your decision today. So again, I would encourage the board to think about site design, compatibility with existing uses, those types of things as you begin your discussion. I will also mention, the fence that has been talked about along that northern property line, that's not on the site plan, we'd need to add that as a condition, it sounded like the applicant was gonna agree.
Agreed, yeah.
Agreed to that, so we'll need to add that, if that's, if it is agreed to for approval, that needs to be part of somebody's motion, if that's something that you wanna consider.
Was the traffic impact study not required?
No.
On the project this size?
No.
Right, but they did it voluntarily?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you entertain a motion, I just think the developer oughta be commended for, as George alluded to earlier, the way this whole project was handled in terms of not getting into the merits or demerits of what they're trying to do, but how they went about it.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of addressing concerns, my perception is they really went above and beyond, and really this kinda oughta be held up as a model in a lot of ways to some of our local developers as to how you come in and address community concerns, so I just appreciate them being willing to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Grubbs, so noted. The public hearing has been closed. What are your thoughts of the motion?
I'm gonna do, we recommend approval.
Okay.
With the construction. With the additional fencing and other volunteer conditions.
Great, I second that.
There's been motion by Mr. Lane, second by Mr. Grubbs. Those in favor, sign. All those opposed? That's unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us back to our project item seven on your agenda, that's case 34, W3412.
Yep.
Desmond gave a really in-depth presentation on consent agenda.
Right.
I know there is somebody here in the audience that has questions, we can bring them up and let them ask some questions, or we can go ahead and give you the full-blown presentation. We'll leave that up to you, however you, however the Lord would like to proceed.
Your presentation again? All right, no, so we're just gonna call the opposition out. So for the record, again, if you would state your name, address, and zip code, please.
My name is Jack Miller, I'm here with my wife Marilyn Miller. We live at 1010 South Poplar Street, 27101. We're probably within football field's length of, to this property. And we rise in favor of the property, however, we do have concerns about traffic issues. The street that is to be made a through street dumps into a set of bottlenecks. The bottleneck at, you come up, you come up Poplar Street and run into Walnut Street. From there, most people go to the right to Marshall Street, which is a little bit of a blind street, but more importantly, they like, take a left and go to Broad Street, the intersection of Broad and Walnut Street, which is a very dangerous intersection. I go through that intersection routinely with my grandchildren, and my heart beats really tough, because it's a blind, you cannot see until you get into the intersection. The other thing is the intersection of Salem Avenue and Broad Street, there is no light there. I don't want them to be a light there, because as we know, people would probably speed up to get through the red light, the yellow light, then end up, we have a lot of accidents there, but a light would probably cause some of those accidents to be deaths. But there needs to be a roundabout something there to slow the traffic in that area. But, so the bottleneck is this through street, Poplar Street, that would come out and intersect with Salem Avenue, puts a lot more traffic into an area that is already very deficient. And we do have people that, right now, a lot of people, because this bottleneck at Salem Avenue and Broad, they've come down and make the right turn to come up Poplar Street already, and fly through. We've had the police out to try to slow it down some, but people fly through to try to beat people around that corner and then cross that intersection there at Walnut Street and Broad Street. But the project itself, we think it's a fantastic project, and would really be good for the neighborhood.
All right.
If we can get those traffic concerns addressed.
All right.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, Mr. Miller does a question for you.
Yes, so you don't think people will use, what is it, Main and the big traffic circle there to access this more than Broad Street? to access this more than Broad Street?
There's a, right now, of course, with the highway being closed, the parkway being closed, it makes us, it makes it where it's not totally clear. But, but yes, I mean, that is the southwest gateway, southeast gateway, where we have, expect traffic to grow, a lot more traffic's coming from 52 around Salem Avenue, they come to that main traffic circle, and then they come over to the, a very heavy flow of traffic to the, from that main traffic circle comes to there. And if you look at it from Main, then you have a traffic light at Marshall Street, and this is a narrow block, I assume you probably end up, probably having to have another traffic light there at this new, this new through street, Poplar and Salem. And then you've got people right now, like I say, they're backing up there. At 5:00, you can't get through there, you know? And that's why people are cutting through and trying to beat the light and that kind of thing around the corner.
Well, I know, I went through that intersection twice this past week, and one of the times I went through it was because the highway was closed, and I, you know, had to come Salem to sort of get around a bunch of things. So I hope that pattern's going to change in the future. I can also say from a planning board member's perspective, sometimes we don't have all that much influence with DOT on those interchanges and speed limits and things like that, but I am pretty sure that they know that that Broad Street intersection is something they need to keep an eye on, because it has been, as you know, if you've lived in that area for any period of time, a real challenge historically for traffic going through there. So I'm hoping everybody will get on Main Street, though.
Right.
There have been a number of accidents, I don't have a count, there have been a number of accidents within the last few months at Salem and Broad. And there was a T-bone there in that Walnut Street, Broad Street, within the last six months, that, I mean, and I truly want to come out because there is parking there along Broad Street, if you're coming down Graham Avenue to Walnut Street, and yet there, you really cannot see until you, you've got to put your vehicle out in the road before you can see up the road. But, you know, it's a, it's a real concern, because we're going to have someone killed there at that light, or there at those intersections, if we don't have some relief in that area. And I would think we all agree that if, if you look in, for example, the 1001 Marshall Street project, the old Bonson building, that's going to bring additional traffic in that area. The traffic is going to be very large, and it's already bottlenecked. Very significant.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just want to draw your attention. If you go to, if you'll turn to your agenda item, it's item seven, if you'll go to the third page, past the tab, and you look at the overall approved site plan for the southeast gateway, the area that's highlighted in red is the area that we're looking at today as part of this site plan amendment. And if you'll notice, there is no, there currently is no through street where those buildings are located, but if you'll notice, if you'll go to the area nearest the YWCA on the south side of that property, there is currently traffic flow that would circulate around this building and would come out to Poplar. So that's what's on the approved site plan. They're in here today requesting a site plan amendment. If you'll flip the page over to the next page in your book and look on the backside of that, what they are proposing is to get rid of that circulation on the south side of the building nearest the YWCA, and essentially have a through street in between the two buildings. So there is no net increase, there, you know, there was always, it was always going to be circulation around this building. When we call it a through street, it's a through street in this project, this road in and of itself does not go back, go back out and connect to South Main Street. This is internal circulation for folks that are within this project, so there is no potential for cut through, there is no additional traffic besides what the project itself generates, which, you know, went through a TIS whenever it was approved, and all of this is viewed as one project. So this isn't, the change isn't going to generate any additional traffic or any additional potential for cut through. It's essentially just relocating an existing circulation pattern for a new circulation pattern.
And I'll just add to what Chris said, you know, one of the real benefits of this is it does provide a better treatment along the greenway rather than having that parking pulled up there, this kind of celebrates it with some of those amenity areas. And with respect to that traffic count, what was originally approved, according to our calculations, would generate around 936 trips per day. What this amendment would do would generate around 500 trips a day. So it's actually, in our estimation, a decrease over what is currently approved with respect to traffic generation.
That's correct, because it's less retail.
Okay. All right.
There's still eight minutes left.
Is there time still for opposition or rebuttal?
Well, there is no rebuttal.
Okay, he wants to say...
And that's, that's up to your, that's your discretion.
Mr. Miller, I'll give you one minute, sir.
It would seem to me that if you take a building, the front part of this was a one-story building, and now it's going to be a five-story building with 121 apartments in it, so, and you put the street out there, it does relocate the traffic to where it's coming to that intersection.
Thank you. All right, so the public hearing has closed. Is there a motion?
Yes, I recommend we move that we recommend approval.
All right. Second?
Second.
All right, it's motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Bryan. Those in favor, sign of aye? Oppose, the same side? Thank you, it has been approved, that's unanimous.
The next item on your agenda is a briefing on the Peters Creek Parkway growth corridor plan. Just to give you some background information on this item, in 2018, the board directed staff to begin a new series of design-oriented small area plans, which would further refine the existing area plan updates, which you all finished adopting a cycle of in 2018. Again, there would be three types of these new small area plans. The first would be growth corridor plans, such as this one that you're going to hear right now. The second type is northern beltway interchange plans, which Steve is going to present you the first one of those following this item. And lastly, strategic area plans, which we'd be able to begin one of those, but we will be talking to you soon about the potential for one of those when we do work program development for next fiscal year. So just to give you, again, a refresher on what legacy says about growth corridors, these are roads which link activity centers to downtown Winston-Salem. They're intended to be future multimodal transportation arteries, and they're intended to promote a mixture of retail, office, and housing, as well as promoting concentrated development at key locations with the intention of reducing development pressure on nearby single-family neighborhoods. So this slide illustrates the boundaries of the Peters Creek Growth Corridor Plan. Again, these boundaries are much smaller than you've seen in the past with area plans, and again, we're trying to really focus on a specific subset of what was contained in the previous area plans and delve deeper into that. This does take into account the whole Peters Creek Parkway corridor, which is approximately 6.4 miles from downtown to the Davidson County line. As you can see from this image here, there was robust public participation in this plan. Four community meetings were held to develop the plan recommendations between November of last year and April of this year, and unlike some plans where maybe there was strong participation at first, and it kind of dwindles down over time, this process with strong participation right up until the end, and as Aaron or Chris alluded to earlier, there were obviously lots of developments happening that coincided with this plan, and this was a great way to interface with some citizens on those before those items got to your level. So one thing that staff realized early on in looking at this is because the corridor is so much longer than some other growth corridors, we wanted to break this into three sections. Each of these sections has its own character that we'll get into in a minute, and this process was a multi-part process with four key steps. The first is describing the existing character in that corridor section. Second is developing a basic design strategy for new development. Third is identifying development focus areas, and the fourth would be developing actual conceptual site plans or design visions for key sites. So the north section runs from downtown to, basically Business 40 to New 40 at the south. The existing character in this section has a fairly urban form. Again, it's close to downtown. The lots in this section, for the most part, are pretty small, with the exception of a couple of shopping centers. The corridor section is obviously already fully developed, as this was where development happened first along the corridor. And lastly, the buildings here are relatively close to the street. Moving further south, the central section, which is from New 40 down to the Walmart and Lowe's Activity Center at the southern part, has a more suburban form. However, there's a mixture of large and small lot sizes in this area. Again, the corridor has mostly been developed here, but there's a few sites that have been yet to be developed that we'll get into later, and those building setbacks, they vary in this section. The final section of this corridor is from the Walmart and Lowe's Activity Center down to the Davidson County line. The main draw in this area is what you all just talked about at the Oliver's Village Development, and the existing character here has a very suburban form with larger lots, buildings located further to the street, and there's many good developable sites left in this corridor section. So again, with that preliminary work done and the corridor broken into three sections, staff prepared a series of design illustrative boards, such as this example on the bottom of the slide here, which were intended to show citizens various aspects of building design. Again, things such as site layout, property access, and development form, be it urban or suburban. The citizens looked at these development boards for each section of the corridor and decided what kind of vision they had for that section of the character. After that happened, participants prepared design visions for key sites along the corridor based on those strategies. And you can see in the image on the right is probably a better example of this citizen showing off what his group prepared. So at this point, I'm just going to go through three of these site visions. The plan actually has about six in total, but for the sake of time, these are probably the three most impactful. The first is a conceptual redevelopment of the West Salem Shopping Center, which is at the corner of Academy Street and Peters Creek Parkway. This image shows the existing context, which is, again, fairly standard suburban shopping center set back from the road. What the citizens asked for through this planning process is that if this site were to redevelop, new buildings could face Peters Creek Parkway, the buildings could emphasize their entrance locations to be pedestrian-friendly, the parking lots could be broken up into smaller sections and include pedestrian walkways and landscaping, and finally, there'd be an effort to beef up the landscaping next to Peters Creek Parkway. The second site is in the central section of the corridor. This is a much more conventional greenfield suburban site. It's just north of the Lowe's and Walmart Activity Center and across from the Sides Road intersection, and again, the existing image here shows it's mostly wooded with a few single-family homes. The citizens had fairly ambitious, but I think appropriate, plans for this site as well. They wanted to see a new internal road, parallel Sides Branch, which is the stream that runs through the kind of western edge of this property, and set up the buildings to face that road rather than Peters Creek Parkway due to the traffic volumes and issues surrounding Peters Creek Parkway. The parking instead would be along Peters Creek Parkway. The development would have commercial and office uses, just as when we did the area plan, folks noticed a need for particularly medical offices in this part of the community. They also wanted to at least consider a roundabout at Clemensville Road to mirror the three roundabouts that are already in place in this section. There would be, however, right-in, right-out access from Peters Creek to make sure that side of the site was addressed. And probably the most interesting feature of this proposal is this brown line here that I'm moving my cursor on, that was intended to be an internal walking trail with landscaping, such as in the Kimmel Medical Park off of Burke Mill Road. That's where they got the idea for that particular element. The last site design concept that I want to go over with you is a site across from Oliver's Crossing, again, which you previously talked about that development a few minutes ago. This site concept would include two rows of parking facing Peters Creek Parkway, which is what Oliver's Crossing has on the other side of the street. There'd be buildings located behind the parking, a mixture of office and retail buildings, and then multifamily buildings further to the east to buffer to the single-family neighborhoods. Excuse me. There would also be plazas between the buildings to add outdoor elements, and finally, corner plazas with outdoor dining and landscaping is something the citizens were enthusiastic about at this location. Again, there's copies of the plan at each of your places, and it goes into much more detail and has other design concepts, but for brevity, I'll just go over next steps. The planning board public hearing on this plan is scheduled for June 13th, and city council and the county commissioners will hold public hearings on the plan later this summer. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Erickson?
Yeah, I had a question, Mr. Erickson. The first design concept you showed us, which was the West Salem with the landscaping, because I agree that one of the big concerns is the need for more landscaping, especially in a place like this where the parking lot is nothing but bare asphalt. How much redevelopment would have to occur before the developer would be required to put in that additional landscaping?
The short answer is it depends, and let me unpack that a little bit for you, and I may need Mr. Murphy to help me out a little bit here, but the first thing that I would think of is you all adopted an ordinance probably in 2015 regarding site redevelopment and parking lot redevelopment, and there's three thresholds, I can't forget, I forget them off the top of my head, since I'm not in that part of the UDO very often.
I think it's zero to 50, 50 to 80, and 80 to 100.
Thank you, Aaron. But each of those thresholds has a different level of parking lot redevelopment, which would trigger improving the surface and adding the motor vehicle surface area landscaping, street yard, things of that nature. So certainly, if a redevelopment along the lines of what was shown on this conceptual site plan were to happen, the whole site would have to come into compliance with the current UDO landscaping.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to see ways that we can encourage more of that, because it's really important.
The value of property is, is so low that any new development would trigger, that would go past this threshold, just literally almost any of it.
Ms. Dunigan, one other thing that I will point your attention to is the city approved RUCIA or revitalizing urban commercial area funding to this site, I believe in 2013 initially, and at that time, one of the staff conditions for sign-off of them receiving the funding was they added interior planting islands, so those previously did not exist at the site, and I know that they're at least considering for the RUCIA funding, so the Business Inclusion Office may be looking for other ways that they could improve the site as well in the future as they receive other funding.
New project that was just approved right across the street, that's on the corner, correct? The Shalom project? All right.
And the flip side of that, I apologize. Is that if someone wanted to make some cosmetic improvements to this shopping center, that again, if they got close to triggering one of those thresholds, then they might decide to not do anything. That's...
No, it's, the provisions deal with expansion, redevelopment, or replacement of buildings, so we don't get into...
As long as they're not building or expanding.
Right, so in other words, and that was purposely done because we didn't want to discourage facade improvements and those kind of things. It was intentional that if you're going and like taking, like the way this concept has it where you're taking parking where there may already be excessive parking, and you're going in and you're developing things, that obviously those areas would have to be brought into compliance. If you're doing, you know, if essentially you're going in and doing a large, you're doing this whole thing at one time, the whole site would have to be brought into compliance. If you're tearing down and starting over, obviously you're going to, you know, you're going to meet the standards of today, but if you, you know, like under this example here, you know, let's take away the out parcel development that's shown, you know, bringing those buildings up the street. If they just... If they just wanted to come in under the existing, the darker yellow color, and do facade improvements, there's not, it would not prohibit them from doing that. It wouldn't be cost prohibitive. There's not a threshold they would have to meet and say, you know, once you cross that threshold, then you have to do, you know, more landscaping, those kind of things. That was a business deal as part of the RUCIA that had them go in and do those landscaping islands, it wasn't an ordinance requirement.
Thank you.
One similar parallel, if you kind of come further down Peters Creek to the South Park Shopping Center, where the food line is, remember we had the Zaxby's that went in there, kind of a similar situation. We took advantage of some excess parking, Zaxby's went in, they installed the street yard, went in and put the proper plantings in. So similar to what you could expect here.
You know, this is, this is sort of my backyard, this Peters Creek, and it really does have everything. So I think the more we think about it in planning, I mean, this is really valuable. For those of you that don't know it, the transit is used probably on Peters Creek as good as any place in Winston-Salem. I mean, people are waiting at the bus stops. It's an efficient use of transit because you can get down to Walmart from residential places. I mean, this is a real gem in my mind in terms of the future. Let me, let me object to the staff's creative thinking on page 20 about Fourth Street. In fact, I see it just the opposite, and I think City Council's seen it just the opposite from what you're seeing here. You're still looking at this as another gateway area. I think the reason that the Fourth Street Bridge was held on to was to keep neighborhoods interconnected. This is a neighborhood. This doesn't need to be looked at for being retail. If we're, if we're looking at the objectives that we've seen the staff pushing of infill, there is more density on this street than you will find in most streets around. Absolutely. And it's got tiny houses, it's got multi-use, it's got apartments, it's got all the things, plus it's got boarding houses. And I just feel like that there's a real, there's been a real sense to try, this, it may be awkward, but what we've seen is that this neighborhood connects Ardmore to West End to West Salem. And if we get rid of it, that's going to mean there's a more of a, of a, of a boundary. And there'll be retail and other things like that in between, which will not enhance that connection between the three neighborhoods that has been talked about so much. So I would disagree with the way that this is written and would encourage you to look at some of the things that are being met with this. It is too bad that the city hasn't followed what is needed in terms of dealing with the, with a adult establishment next to a residential. And I know that that's still sitting on the city attorney's desk, but that has been the downside of this. Otherwise, this neighborhood would be even stronger in connecting the academy and West Salem and West End.
So, Mr. Bryan, may I just give a little background for the rest of the board since they probably need to unpack this a little bit? I anticipated there might be some discussion on this, so I have the slide in my back pocket. But this is a site that did have a lot of discussion in some of the initial visioning meetings for the area plan process. Staff talked about this, and it became pretty apparent to us that, for the reasons that Mr. Bryan mentioned, this site has enough complexity that it really needs to be its own planning process. Again, the, on page 20 of your plan, we're kind of pointing out some things that are features of the site in terms of the improvements taking place to Business Forty, its location close to hospitals and downtown and things of that nature. Those factors do exist as threats or opportunities, depending on what happens here. But ultimately, the staff believes that because of those things and because of all the variety of opinions we heard on this, that this was really more of a corridor study, and this particular site should just be examined at another day. And for now, the recommendations in the area plan, which are residential, would still hold should another mixed-use project, such as the one that the board saw in 2016, came before the board between now and the future time that such a plan could be created.
Kirk, exactly right. You know, we couldn't stick our head in the sand and sort of acknowledge that there's not development pressure here. We've seen two zoning cases. And so through this process, we didn't feel comfortable changing a land use recommendation. That's really not what this was for. And so that's why we have left this, basically, as Kirk said, to rely on the recommendations of the area plan. And we say in the very last sentence, this plan recommends examining this site using a dedicated process where all interested parties could collaborate on a redevelopment alternative for site. The City-County Planning Board could propose a process be undertaken in a future work program. So we're not beating the drum for redevelopment, but we do have to acknowledge there's been requests on this. So again, we're not changing it with this plan. We're just calling that out as an alternative that the Planning Board could consider going down the road.
And the other important factor to remember is that it is, majority of that area highlighted is in single ownership, which in and of itself would lend itself to redevelopment regardless of our thoughts, feelings. I mean, again, so that's, that's an important factor to keep in mind, that, you know, one entity does currently own a lot of this. So it's not like we're looking at an area that's, you know, owned by 25 or 30 people. The majority of it's owned by one person or one entity.
Yeah. Well, they're for owners. I still object to the way it's written. I think you could emphasize much more strongly how this is, is an important to the neighborhood and to the mix of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you.
And then we have one agenda item that we added.
While Steve's getting his show pulled up, I told Chris I hope we didn't have a curse here. We showed the Burger King on the cover there, you know, it caught on fire, and then we added Mr. Barbecue and it caught on fire. So I hope so. We're going to rethink these covers.
Okay. I'm ready now, so. Let me check one other. So this doesn't move on its own. Let me double-check the timings on it.
None, yes, sir. I got one, yes, sir.
Where's the full file presentation?
He's funny.
Thank you, Mr. Corley.
Can I note that I have to take the bash game this evening? Were you going to the dance? My wife and children are already there. Changing the car. Only because I forgot to bring my clothes.
This is the one that we have.
It's under staff presentations. Sorry about that. Okay. I'm here to talk about, to give you a quick briefing on the US 158 Northern Beltway Interchange Plan. And this is the first plan of three that's been suggested by the Planning Board. And this is, let me, let me escape and get the timing off this. And location is shown within the blue circle. There are 12 proposed local interchanges as part of the overall Beltway, and there will be two more interchange plans done in the next couple of years.
Just go from there.
Yeah, it'll work from there. I don't know.
Can you just go from there?
Yeah, I think let's just, let's just work from that view.
So, the interchange plan process was something that the board, the board agreed to last fall. We had four meetings. The kickoff meeting where you go over existing conditions. Second meeting where you talk about design framework. Third meeting is where you start drawing out development concepts. And then the last meeting is to refine those development concepts and review the draft Robust is probably not a strong enough word to describe what happened at our kickoff meeting. We had overflow crowd of 120 people. They thought that this dealt with the Northern Beltway, and they had questions on that. Or they thought that if they were in the planning area, that we were somehow going to buy their property for development, the government's coming in. And so we had to fight those preconceptions. So we had a big crowd there. The study boundaries or planned boundaries are Northern Beltway to the north, Walckertown-Guthrie Road to the east, the Morris Farms Single Family Subdivision, and some other property lines to the south, and about 1,200 to 1,500 feet west of Reed'sville Road and US 158 to the west. That area contains 285 acres. And this gives you, it's a little dated area, but gives you a sense that a good bit of this area is either developed with single-family homes or is not intensely developed. This is a photo taken with a drone that shows the, looking at the area from William Tucker Road, which used to be named Old Blue's Creek Road. It's looking southward from where the interstate is. This picture is looking west across Reed'sville Road at a couple of commercial sites at located corner of US 158 and Old Blue's Creek Road. The existing land use from the Walckertown Area Plan Update shows the area primarily for, is used right now for agricultural uses, which is shown in green, or the crosshatch is vacant, or it's areas that are white, or used for single-family homes, which are the varying, various colors of yellow. And again, on the west side of Reed'sville Road, there's a small commercial area, a church and a fire station, voluntary fire station, which are in institutional uses, and an auto repair shop, which is shown in lavender. The proposed land use shows the western portion on the east side of Reed'sville Road, south of the interchange as a Old Blue's Creek Road Activity Center, which shows commercial closest to Reed'sville Road. Purple areas is a mixed-use area, and then some attached housing nearby. And then the eastern area for single-family residential. These are some pictures at the third community meeting where the design boards, or what I call site planning elements, were shown, and residents kind of picked which ones they preferred and also to help give their thoughts about development. The area shown in light green is the design focus area, which went all the way from Reed'sville Road to Walckertown-Guthrie Road. It's about 200 acres. There is on the, right on the left side of this green area is Lowry Mill Creek, which the brown, white-brown area is the floodplain associated with that. And you can see there's some drainage ways that run through the middle of this focal area that drain into that. And so, again, the staff helped with the, some basic road layout. We felt that since Old Blue's Creek Road had been cut and ha, or cut, divided by the Beltway, that there needed to be a connecting road between US 158 that would go over to Walckertown-Guthrie Road. So that's why you see a road proposed there along with some others. Now, as far as land use, you can see the area that's shown with red dashes for commercial, the mixed-use area, both on the southern portion and sort of in a center rectangular area, attached housing to the north. There's a middle area that could be either single-family or for attached residential, and then the eastern area would be for single-family residential. Those drainage ways sort of divide the site into about 100-acre segments. And again, these are some of the design boards or site planning elements that were looked at, different type of site layouts for retail uses, layouts for, village layouts for mixed-use developments, and then types of attached residential development, including assisted living. There were two design concepts that were developed, and we decided that both were viable, so we leave both of them as alternatives, but they sort of point out some things. The first concept shows the areas closest to US 158 for three commercial uses, that could be drugstore, fast food, any type of those, type of uses. That area, we ideally wanted to put the shopping center in that area, but it's about 10 acres, which is a little bit tight to put a shopping center with an anchor tenant and a few other tenants with it. So you see the shopping center, the commercial areas are shown in the beige color, and the shopping center alternative to this one is more of a traditional layout with the out parcels closest to the proposed connecting road. The red areas are attached housing, particularly to the north. The area to the south is shown for, suggested for senior living. And then in the middle, in the development area, it's pink, is shown for office development. The second alternative is very similar to the first one, except that you can see the shopping center area has more of a village layout, like Robin Hood Village, where you've got retail stores close to the street and sort of an entryway. It gives you that small town view, and then a larger anchor store. The area where the senior assisted living was shown is now shown for offices. One of the things that the residents really wanted, hoped would happen here would be construction of a fitness center, YMCA. So that's what's shown in green. And then again, you've got attached housing. And the closest to the Beltway is, in this concept, is where the senior living is proposed. And again, the eastern half is shown for single-family residential. And so they're very similar. This is a comparison of the two, so you can kind of see there's some slight changes, but pretty much the same. And then they did some summary recommendations as far as driveway locations, how to treat the furniture of the buildings and things like that. Let me say that this is a very viable area because all that land is in probably 10 property owners or less, so it, you know, is possible to be assembled. Although the property owners are tended, and they're not interested in selling or developing, we said that's fine. But they do realize that their children may not continue what they, their farming, so they said, well, we may not be interested right now, but in 10, you know, 10 or 15 years, we may be very interested. So they were sort of unwilling at first, thinking we were trying to force it to happen. And once they realized it wasn't forced, they became more and more comfortable with it and realized that it gave them more options. And then finally, the next steps is similar to the... And then finally, the next steps is similar to the corridor plan for Peters Creek. This is to be presented to you at their next meeting on June 13th. And it is to go to the Waukataun Planning Board after that, and then to the elected officials at an undetermined time. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What, what influence does Waukataun Planning Board have on this? Is it a particular area, or is it a completely overlap or what?
It is really, this area is mostly all in the county, but there are some areas where, can you see my error?
Yeah.
There are some areas, it's almost like it's encircled by Waukataun.
Oh, it is, encircled by it.
Yes.
So I mean, that's, if you can see that, that hole is kind of where we're at.
Uh huh.
The purple is Waukataun.
Oh, okay. So we just, have they expressed interest in taking over this?
Well, as far as involuntary annexation, no, they haven't. I mean, we made a conscious effort to reach out to them as we were sort of starting on this plan, and these are the kind of boundaries that we ended up with.
There was, might have been some initial resistance, but I think they're pretty comfortable. The mayor of Waukataun attended almost all the meetings, so seemed to be comfortable with it, particularly at the end.
Please provide, what planning staff member, members are providing planning services to Waukataun right now?
He's left because he has a Waukataun meeting at 7:00, Gary.
Gary's the lead planner. He's heading out of there tonight, so he's got another meeting to go to.
Bless his heart. Yeah, and I apologize for the problems with the PowerPoint presentation. I will do better next time. I will come in here and make sure this works.
I had a kind of procedural question. So you mentioned that the owners of this land aren't immediately interested perhaps in developing it this way. Say you get other requests, you know, in the interim, you know, in the next 10, five, 10 years, and they want to do something somewhere else. Are you going to still try to steer them to this area, or, or what would the result be?
It, well, it depends on where it's proposed and what the land use plan says. If they're proposing something near US 52, we're probably not going to try to steer them all the way over here. Again, it's going to depend on what comes in, and we're not saying this is the only location. It can happen, what we're trying to accomplish is this is saying, we think this is, particularly once the Beltway gets connected to US 52, this will be a prime, I think, prime location, particularly for neighborhood services. And what we're trying to accomplish here is, not that it'll be exactly developed like this, but that it gives some guidelines that we want, sort of village-like atmosphere and design, and not just come in with a cut and paste traditional shopping center form.
Along this corridor, you have essentially the Activity Center, which encompasses part of this area in the area plans of record, and the intense commercial area at 158 and NC 66. So, you know, the area plan doesn't recommend a lot of commercial anywhere in between. So if someone were looking to come in and do commercial, it would be our standard recommendation. You can come in and request it, but more than likely, our recommendation is gonna be no, because we already have areas identified for commercial in the area plan, and in this case, in this more intense and intentional interchange study. So, and obviously, it doesn't prevent someone from coming through and asking for something, but from a staff perspective, we would use the existing plans that we have, plus this interchange study, to try to steer folks towards there if they're looking in that corridor.
Who will projected car counts be right there? 25,000, 20,000?
That I don't know.
They don't have any numbers like that.
Traffic counts. You know, traffic counts from the Beltway and US 158, what they think those traffic counts will be.
The Beltway, actually, I found some. The Beltway is to be about 45,000 to 50,000 a day when it starts. I think Reed'sville Road was supposed to be 15,000 to 20,000, something like that.
All right. Staff report?
Yep, I will be brief. At the county commissioners' meeting today, the commissioners appointed Jack Steelman to fill Arnold King's unexpired term. And so Jack will now go to city council for confirmation. I think a lot of you probably know Jack. He used to work for the city at Downtown Development. He is now a commercial realtor. He does have a planning background. He's got a planning degree from East Carolina, urban and regional planning, so he does have some planning knowledge and background. So hopefully that will get confirmed soon. We are working on our work program. We'll be bringing that to you soon. We are putting finishing touches on that. In fact, I saw an email from Margaret this afternoon, so I think we're getting closer to getting that to you to review. And I do think we have some exciting things on there to talk about for the next calendar year, or next fiscal year, rather. Our gene caseload is pretty small. We've got two rezonings, one subdivision, and we'll be bringing both of these plans back to you for public hearings in June. We are canceling sign check tomorrow. We kind of need all hands on deck to turn these reports around to get them to city council by June the 3rd. So we need all the staff in house, so we are gonna cancel sign check. Gary will find some time to go out and take pictures of the sites. We'll make sure the signs are posted by the Wednesday deadline, so rest assured that will be done. I just don't know when that's gonna happen, but we are gonna have to cancel sign check this time around. And I hope the board understands kind of the unique circumstances surrounding that. So, and last, I would like to thank Councilmember Larson for joining us tonight and spending some time with us. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. I wanted to thank everyone for those who attended the 16th event for Arnold, the resolution. So I understand that turned out really, really well. Anyone want to make a comment on that?
He was truly touched.
All right.
He really was. He really was. It was just a nice event.
I saw a few photos, so, all right.
You have a motion to adjourn?